It's nine thirty on July twenty second, let's all committee the whole business meeting to order. Adam Burd, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Osman.
Here.
Mr. Seaster.
Here.
Mr. Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Eustace.
Here.
Mr. Clerman.
Excuse.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Warfield.
Excuse. We're running late today. Five and two minutes. Please stand for the notation and the pledge. So let us pray. Heavenly Father, guide us today as we discuss the affairs of the citizens of Chippewa County. Help us to make wise decisions on their behalf and the good of all. This we pray in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which is seen.
We have a many-page agenda. The agenda is only one page after the other. How about Washington?
You still make noise on the tree.
Thank you, Mitch.
House Ward.
Thank you, Tom. Julian supported Adam Burd.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Clerman. Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Osman.
Yes.
Mr. Eustace.
Yes.
Mr. Seaster.
Yes.
Thank you, it's Carrie Zive. And who has?
Paul.
Citizen comments, anybody who would like to talk to the board, please come up to the podium, state your name, and we have three minutes.
My name is Julie Garrett. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Office of Disaster Recovery in Mesoneas with the SBA. I've spoken with you before, I'm just here to give you an update. I'm working on the ice storm recovery and the disaster loan program. I wanted to let you know that so far we have had forty-six applications from Chippewa County, forty-five from Emmett, and forty-four from Atsigo. We have them from Charlestown, Montmorency and Pesquio as well, but I just wanted to let you know that you guys are among the top in this county. We have a center open, it's moved to your city, it's over at in the Biden Building, two twenty-nine Fifth Street. We have people there to help anyone trying to put in an application for disaster loan, if they have a question or they just had a problem with their application, we have people right here to help your citizens. Um, the deadline is August eighth, and that's for physical disaster loans, for your primary residence, whatever wasn't covered by insurance. The loans are great, they're very low interest, and there's no payment for the first year, zero percent interest for the first year. And then we also help businesses that had physical damage or economic loss, like if they had to close because of the ice storm and you know, people couldn't get out of their driveways and there was no power, and they're still recovering financially from that, they can also get assistance. So just wanted to give you a really quick update, let you know that we're here to help. Um, you can find out more about this online at sba dot gov forward slash disaster. Or we have an eight hundred number, eight hundred six five nine two nine five five. August eighth is that deadline, we'll be in the bottom of the building till August eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thanks for coming on. Who else? Moving on to our scheduled business. Tell me your presentation.
All right, good morning, everyone. Um, I recognize a lot of bases around the table, if you don't know who I am, I'm Doug Dieter of Grayden. And we performed the county's audit for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty four. And I'm here to present that audit to you. Um, the audit report is about two hundred and fifty pages long. And so I've kind of summarized some of the highlights of the audit report in the PowerPoint presentation. There are page references in the PowerPoint back to the audit report, if you'd like to see more additional information to what's on that slide, you can find it in the audit report on those pages. Um, if you have any questions that we go through, please don't hesitate to interrupt me, I'm happy to answer questions at any time. So I'll start off with, we issued what's called an unmodified opinion. This is basically the highest level of assurance independent auditors can provide. It's a clean opinion. And same opinion that the county has received over the years on their audit. So we'll start off with looking at the general fund. Uh, this is the main operating fund of the county. And this is the balance sheet, shows all the assets, liabilities, and difference of what is called the fund balance, which is kind of what's left over for next year. And we got twenty twenty four compared to twenty twenty-three, as well as a column that shows the year increase, increase year over year. As you can see, the first section, total assets, end of the year in twenty twenty-four, fifteen point five million, compared to fourteen point seven the prior year. Most of uh, your assets and your cash investments, and then some receivables, which are uh, you know, some state revenue, that type of thing, things earned as of year end that were, weren't collected until after year end. The next section, liabilities, you have your normal trade accounts payable and some other liabilities, such as accrued payroll and that type of thing for services or, or products received before year end that weren't paid for after year end. Uh, the total liabilities for the general fund, December thirty-first, was six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars this year, compared to the one we were eighty-two this year. Fund balance, this is the difference between your assets and liabilities. Uh, it's broken into three different categories, you have non-spendable, one hundred ninety-six thousand, what that is, is that, that uh, kind of an offset, the prepaid amount you see in the asset section, because that money's already out the door, so it's not available for future spending. There's an assigned amount of about three point three million. This represents the county's fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget that was adopted, that expected to have expenditures exceed revenues by three point three million. So, uh, county principals require that amount to be set, basically assigned or set aside within the fund balance as of year end to show that it's already been given a purpose to the budget process. The last section in the fund balance is the unassigned, uh, that is the end of the year at ten million six hundred sixty-four thousand. So just a small increase year over year in your unassigned portion. Next, we'll look at the general funds, general fund revenues and other financial sources. So this might be a little hard to see on the screen, but um, this is all the revenues that came in during the year compared to budgets, what the final amended budget was, the county had adopted as of year end. And then also compares it to the prior year actuals, and then the increased decreases prior year actual compared to the current year actuals. So you can see there, your property taxes, your largest revenue stream, as it is for most counties, uh, was ten million nine hundred ninety-four thousand compared to, compared to ten point, almost ten point eight you'd budgeted for, so a little more than you'd budgeted committed property taxes. And you're over last year by about just over seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's basically, each year, there's an increase in taxable values that increases uh, the amount of tax revenue comes in. Next section, or next line, intergovernmentals, this is your state and federal revenue. You can see, very similar to what you had budgeted, what you expected, uh, the actual was two million six hundred sixty-seven thousand, up from about two point one million the previous year. There was a new grant, uh, that the county received. And then also interest rates, reimbursement stuff, interest rates are up this year as well, so you earn more money on your investments. Next, let's add expenditures. Uh, this is broken down by the main essentials of the county, the general government, judicial, public safety, and health and welfare, and then the other functions are grouped together as other. Your largest uh, category is your public safety, again, as it is for a lot of different counties, your, your public safety, your shares, your corrections officer, jail, uh, has a, a big budget. This year, the actual cost for the public safety was five point two million, compared to about five point six budgeted. And compared to just over five million dollars in the previous year. So it's up about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, uh, most of that had to do with salaries and wages and benefits, that type of thing. Next section, or the next largest section is the general government, of just over four million dollars, compared to budget of five point two. And that's, you can see a decrease of just over three hundred thousand compared to prior year. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, there was a capital project that happened in the general government category that uh, was just about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that, that didn't happen again in twenty twenty-four. You can see in the health and welfare category, you're just under budget, uh, actual of one, one million one forty-five, but you are over prior year about five hundred and sixty thousand. That has to do with the juvenile detention center project that was going on, uh, in twenty twenty-four. Uh, the transfers out, so what this is, is the, the money, there's unrestricted funds that come into the general fund that are then transferred to other counties, other funds of the county to support their operations. So the county had budgeted one point two million to transfer out of the general fund, only transferred nine hundred eighty-three thousand to subsidize those other funds and programs of the county. So giving an idea of the general fund fund balance, five-year trend, you can see the last three years have stayed fairly consistent. The change in fund balance this year, so the change is difference between your revenues and your expenditures. Your revenues exceed your expenditures this year by six hundred fifty-three thousand, compared to what you had budgeted of two point five million dollar decrease. So you have about a three point one million dollar swing, which had to do with more revenues coming in and less expenditures going out than when you had budgeted for. You can see there, the county ended the year with a fund balance of fourteen million two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. The county participates in the MERS pension plan, as do a lot of municipalities in Michigan, this is a statewide plan. Uh, the state hires the actuary, the state comes up with the actuarial assumptions that are used in this to calculate what the liability is. The actuary will do a calculation based on those assumptions to come up with what the total liability is for the county, expected liability or the future life plan. And then the county has some funds set aside at MERS, excess contributions that are invested by MERS to offset that liability. So what you're seeing here on the screen is what's called the net pension liability. This is the total liability minus the funds that the county has, um, invested at MERS. So you can see for twenty twenty-four, the net pension liability was thirteen million nine hundred four thousand. As members, that number of the, this is basically the unfunded portion. That was compared to fourteen million three seventy-four in the previous year. Now, a couple of things are, are the driver here usually. One is how the market is doing at December thirty-first. The county uses uh, the MERS report that lags one year behind their fiscal year, so December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the county used the MERS December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three valuation. Uh, and so give me an idea, uh, this year, the plan recognized two point eight million in investment gains, so your investments grew by two point eight million that are invested at MERS. Compared to twenty twenty-three, you had almost a three million dollar loss. So that can really make some big swings in what this number is here over the year. The county is approximately sixty-six percent funded in twenty twenty-four compared to about sixty-four percent funded in twenty twenty-three, so your funded position is about two percent. Each year, the actuary also determines what the required contribution is for the county. And you can see there, the orange is the actual, the blue is what is calculated by the actuary. And in twenty twenty-four, the county contributed the same amount as what the actuary said was required. Twenty twenty-three, you can see they, the county invested a little bit, or contributed a little bit more than what the actuary required. So generally, these stay pretty consistent, unless you are trying to, um, overfund the plan. But you are required to make the minimum required contribution. Any questions on that pension plan? In addition to the financial statement audit, we do also what's called a single audit. This is required by the federal government, anytime an entity expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards in a year. The county has, uh, had this audit done over the years, this is a little bit different than the financial statement audit, where this looks a different client, so the federal government says, here's a bucket of money, you can spend it on this program or this purpose, the federal government wants us to verify that that's how you spend those funds. So the county expended just over a million dollars in twenty twenty-four in federal awards compared to one point four million in twenty twenty-three. The main difference there is in twenty twenty-three, it had some more transportation grants, grants at straight regional ride. Uh, so that's tiny, some capital projects or purchases, that type of thing, usually what causes that difference. Uh, we issued what's called an unmodified opinion over compliance, so similar opinion that we gave on the financial statements, but this is related to compliance, and says that the county complied with federal grant requirements in all material respects. And therefore, it's another clean opinion that we apply to the federal award clients. And each year, the federal government provides an outline to help the auditor decide what federal programs to audit. And so based on that criteria, the program we audited for the county was the child support enforcement or the Title Four D grant. Uh, this is the last slide, and there are just some upcoming GASB, generally accepted county principal standards that are going into effect for the county in the near future. Um, nothing of real significance here for the county, other than GASB one oh three, which is effective and for your December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six fiscal year, it's going to change how your audit report looks a little bit. So no accounting difference or number differences, just how, how it's presented in your audit report is the only change there. The other two are probably going to have a pretty minimal effect on the county, so don't get sensitive. That's all I have to cover today. Then I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has questions or comments.
Any questions, Doug?
Just, just wondering, when you said the uh, detention centers, so that was on the health and welfare line, not in public safety?
It was, yes.
Thank you.
Maybe not, it's during the jail. But it's in the jail, childcare fund is easier on the taxpayer.
Thank you, Doug.
Yep, you're welcome.
Well, we appreciate it.
No, no, I say that.
I'll repeat this, the audit obtained a clean, unmodified opinion, the county's financial statements are feasible, material budget violations and deficit fund balance. These were no, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified in the audit, so that's a parade to sue.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on, we have the judge here in his top person. Third Circuit Court Annual Report. That's page thirteen on your high fat board.
Praise to all the professionals. It's uh, thank you for your time this morning. I have a PowerPoint for you today, I'm just gonna get old too old for a while, some comments and highlights from the written annual report that I gave you, answering the questions. Uh, our circuit court mission is to administer criminal justice and resolve civil disputes in a way that respects public resources, protects individual rights, and promotes public confidence and the union law. And our, the circuit court is your, your general, uh, general jurisdiction trial court. Uh, so we handle felonies, lawsuits over twenty-five thousand dollars, property disputes, uh, family disputes, uh, adjunctive, adjunctive and other equitable relief, and suits against the government, and also appeals, either from the district court or from administrative agencies like the Secretary of State or Zoni Voyage or whatnot. Uh, one of the things that we have continued to prioritize is transparency, public access, and community engagement. Uh, we continue to use video conferencing for many hearings. Uh, there's sort of a, there's been a shortage of attorneys in rural counties, and Chippewa County's not been immune from that issue. And so on our public defender, our MIDC issues, they've had, we've had attorneys from around the state, from downstate all the way up to the western U.P. And we've been very accommodating to their requests to appear by video for its mancurings as a label. And that helps us to, uh, get the assistance that we need on our digital defense docket, uh, to keep the cases moving forward. And our court also is continuing to be a leader statewide in live streaming of criminal and most of our civil docket to provide a maximum public transparency, uh, and opportunity to see what's going on from their courts. We also had a high school class come in, I've had some meetings with the local bar, and we're continuing that, those sort of efforts as well. One of the things I wanted to highlight this year is the work of our court administrator, Ms. Don Yeo. And she's here with me today, and the circuit court's always had great staff and great support. Uh, Ms. Rio has really kicked it up to a new level of what we're doing in the court administration. And she's, uh, in the midst of completing a certified court manager's program through the Michigan Supreme Court State Court Administrator's Office. And to my knowledge, you've never hit that, that involves issues, uh, receiving a tremendous amount of additional training and support from the state uh, to kind of increase the professionalism in the administration of our court. She's taking great initiative and leadership with our staff, and also, um, finding ways, we've tried to restructure how we do things internally in the court, to get our court administrator out of the day-to-day court files and be thinking about stewardship. And that has freed, uh, Ms. Rio up to do some really interesting things. This last year, uh, she secured a small grant from the State Court Administrator's Office to, uh, provide a self-help center that now is up and running in the law library on the, in the second floor. And this is a center where self-representing litigants, I mean lawyers cost a lot of money. And we want to encourage them to get legal counsel, but if they want to represent themselves, they have the absolute right to do that. And then, uh, they can have access not only to the materials in the law library, but they can, um, have access to a computer, printer, website, webcam, to participate in court hearings by Zoom, um, court forms, uh, Michigan Legal Help dot org, which walks them through different things. And also a remote navigator, designated powers, where they can log in and somebody down in Lansing, who's not a lawyer, but is trained to help them navigate these issues, will help them navigate the issues of how to represent themselves and what, uh, what files to, what documents to file. And, uh, the other courts have participated in that project, and we're getting, we're setting up stations where people can access not only circuit court records, but district court records and whatnot, so that, uh, we're trying to make that a useful thing for the public. And that was, uh, one hundred percent our court administrator's idea and execution and implementation, getting that done. Uh, she had good support from an IT department to, to make that actually happen. Um, our recovery court is, uh, still going strong. We graduated, since I put in the report for last year, we graduated seven participants, five had been removed. Uh, over the life of the program, there have been eighty-eight graduates and a hundred and seven removals. Uh, we, for the last five, six years, tried to kind of flip-flop that and made, made some progress, so that now, instead of, it used to be about four out of ten people were successful with the program. Uh, we're shooting for getting to about six out of ten, but we're at about five out of ten. Uh, sometimes north of that, sometimes south of that, but we, we've made some changes to how we, uh, interact with those, uh, with those participants. And we've seen some good results. Of course, this is a team approach, we've got great support historically and continuing from this board, uh, for your financial contributions to our recording each year, which is vital. And, uh, from our prosecutor's office, you can't have a program develop a prosecution, it can veto. Uh, and our sheriff's department. In fact, our sheriff's department has continued, uh, their investment and support of the program to the extent that now, uh, the elected sheriff himself is attending our, our meetings and participating in the court hearings with the participants, which to my knowledge doesn't occur in any program, none where, uh, it shows just an unparalleled level of support from our law enforcement partners, and we sure appreciate it. And so it's a team approach, involves probation and treatment, law enforcement, prosecutor, defense, the court. And we meet every week to talk about all our participants, they come in and we review how they're doing, we reward good behavior, we punish bad behavior. And, uh, it's, it's, it's for non-violent offenders who have serious addiction issues and have not succeeded or are not expected to succeed on a traditional probation model. Uh, we target people that we would otherwise send to prison, uh, or at a minimum, a year in the county jail. And a year in prison costs the taxpayers nowadays north of four grand. And a year in county jail, I'm pretty sure it costs taxpayers more than ten grand. Um, sheriff would tell you what the cost is, but I know it's more than ten. So our whole program runs each year for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we have right now almost thirty participants enrolled. So I'm not really good at math, like Mr. Dieter did, but but I think that's pretty good numbers for the saving overall. And we also get better results with recidivism, we put that in there as well, that, um, yeah, the, the state tracks that data. And we have a seventy-five percent reduction in recidivism from our graduates as compared to people that match a similar demographic and criminogenic profile that have not graduated from, have not participated in such a program. Uh, so it's a smarter way to spend money in the criminal justice system for our drug and alcohol addicted offenders, and we get better results. The team, the, the team is, we couldn't do it without the team, and just one example, recently, we contracted with, uh, one of the deputies, uh, Ron Fennlin, has a LLC that we contracted with, for him to do, um, home checks and curfew checks, and provide some services to the court. And, uh, recently, while he was on vacation, we, um, had a participant who's had some mental health struggles. And this participant, the night before a court hearing, was sending some text messages to our program coordinator, Nicole Plosky, uh, that showed that she was kind of giving up, you know, not really thinking she could succeed, it was really hurt. So as a team, that morning, we talked about how we were going to deal with that. Well, then that participant did not show up for court. And, uh, the team really kicked in, and the prosecutor, uh, leaned over and was talking to the program coordinator about, hey, let's see if, uh, Ron Fennlin can get out and check on this person. So we contacted, from the jury box in the courtroom, the team is contacting, I don't even know who this is, Adam. I'm engaging with the other participants, so while the team in the jury box is reaching out to the person we contracted with, he's on vacation. He came in off vacation to go check on her at her home, she didn't answer the call. He had to persist and ended up getting her to come, and she had, uh, she was very drowsy and, uh, was, was, uh, despondent and was having a mental health episode, and was hugely suicidal. And he got her to come with him to the court to talk with our program manager. Stick around, we got her to an emergency room, we got her into inpatient mental health treatment. Uh, so that's just a, an example of how, if that person had been on regular probation and they don't show up for court, I sign an arrest form. They get arrested the next day, or the next week, or the next month. You know, there's a lot of factors that go into play about how that gets executed. And maybe the person doesn't survive in a suicide situation that they have. So that's just one, one example of the things that happen with, with some regularity in a public order, when we're engaging with these people in a much more day-to-day, uh, way that saves lives. All right, so that's, I always like to brag on the, uh, on the recovery court program, and again, we, we really appreciate this board's commitment and support to early years. Uh, Sue can tell you too, that, um, the sustainability of grant support for that program in the state is sometimes shaky and, uh, and degrading. Not, not, I, it, it's diminishing in its stability over time. And we sure appreciate the support we get from the state for that, but there may come a day when, in order to sustain the program, you need to ask for more from this board. And, uh, hope we're not doing that today, but just to let you know that, uh, rather than the bell and a whistle on the bicycle, this is a wheel on the bicycle of our courts. It's a core function of what we do, it's a core function of how we best respond to criminal litigation, that's, uh, best for the offender, best for the taxpayer, and best for the community, if the citizenism is being lowered. And so if there comes a day when the grant doesn't get done, um, we'll have to come to the sport and ask if, if the fund does our core function of the court. Hopefully, we won't have to get, but I think we were increasingly viewed like that. Uh, friendly court's been doing great, we put some numbers in there, uh, for their child support enforcement exceeds statewide averages, exceeds federal targets. The other big thing, we had this last year, well, what's been ongoing through this year, is the courtroom renovation project. And we're really grateful to this board's, uh, support for that capital improvement. And, uh, your, your building, uh, maintenance supervisor, Gary Hui deserves lion's share of credit for the work that he's done acting as sort of a general. Acting as sort of a general contractor on this, which I'm sure has saved the county a ton of money. I've talked to other judges that have gone through courtroom renovations and. They've spent more to get less than what we've gotten here in Chaboyia. And in large measure, that's because the work that Gary has, has done. Um, and we're almost through it. Welcome, you can come up and check it out. It's uh, it's beautiful. It's a very professional uh, courtroom setting and the, it hadn't been done in thirty-plus years. So it needed it. And also, one of the key features of what we were doing is to make it handicap accessible. Uh, we had juror, a juror that had served before in a wheelchair, but we, we couldn't accommodate him in a jury box. And he had to sit in a place that was very awkward for them. It was very awkward for, for the whole situation. There were good sport about it, but it wasn't ideal. So now we have an ADA compliant with the same jury box. We have any. Uh, major changes to how that was laid out. Uh, and it's, it's all uh, compliant with that and accessible for folks. So we welcome you to check that out. I've got information in there about case filings. Uh, criminal was down a little bit, uh, back to normal levels. Whereas the past couple of years, we had really unusually high criminal filings. Our civil filings were up a little bit as well, but generally the filings have been fairly stable. And the domestic filings as well, and those are handled primarily uh, through the probate court. We have an agreement where then the probate judge, Visna, also serves in the family division of the circuit court. And so he handles the lion's share of, of family division. Put a little bit in there, just out of curiosity for you, uh, there was this new red flag law uh, that passed, uh, not without controversy, of course. And one of the things that we prioritized was to try to implement that law, you know, as a judge and not a lawmaker, I'm the law. Uh, implementer and I apply the law. So this is a law that you have to apply. Regardless of what I do think about it, it's, it's near, it's on a policy matter. I'm not a policy, I'm not a policymaker. Uh, so then we don't want our judges to be policymakers, right? We don't want them making up laws. We want them applying the laws that the people's representatives. But we did work with our law enforcement partners in both counties to come up with some procedures. To make sure that this law was not gonna be used. In a way that would violate people's constitutional rights and was not gonna be implemented in a way. That was gonna increase the danger to the officers. Some wrinkles in the law, without getting into the details, would allow both things to happen. Allow uh, gun rights to be taken away too easily. And would allow, would, would, could be implemented in ways, and I think some places have, where the officers are in a lot of danger. Of knocking on somebody's door and telling them, hey, uh, if you don't turn in all your guns in twenty-four hours, we're gonna be back to take them. And then come back twenty-four hours later. So we are not putting our officers in that situation. That's, that's a dangerous situation. So we coordinate very closely with our law enforcement partners. Uh, and I told you, there were two petitions in each county last year. And all of them had uh, direct or extensive law enforcement involvement with what was going on. And we've ran three out of four of those. Uh, this year so far, we've had only two filed and both were in Chrisland County. Uh, so that's sort of an update of what we've been doing in the Chaboyia court this year. Any questions that you might?
Kudos for the work, I think that's special.
Yeah, we're uh, we're, our grant is built to, to have thirty participants and we usually are at maximum three, yes, even more at one file. But we're now, we now have, I think, thirty on the books, but a couple of ones started. So we're really at capacity. Oh, and I'd encourage you, they are public hearings. We don't put them on YouTube because we can talk about a lot of personal things with them, but they're, they're open to the public. I would encourage any commissioner to attend uh, our court sessions. They're on Wednesday mornings. If, if you're interested, reach out to Cole Plosky uh, so that she can make sure you're coming on a day when we're, when we're doing a lot. Some weeks we're only taking, we're only touching base with our phase one participants, so there might not be a lot of people there. But the first week, the first Wednesday of every month, we, we have all of our participants come. That'd be a great week, brief thought. Let us know if you want. In fact, uh, in August, the first Wednesday in August, which is what? Yeah, six. Yeah, on August sixth, like nine AM. We're having graduations, right? One of the participants is gonna graduate the program. We, we expect, if she finishes strong, we expect her to graduate, right? Uh, so that would be a great week to come, if you're interested in seeing uh, firsthand what it is that we're doing. Um, I do have a doc that I have to get upstairs for, but I see we're also on for the personnel policies and I just wanted to say about that. That um, the courts are a little different from some of the other things that this county funds. In that the courts are not a department of the county. We exercise state judicial authority. And so that means that there's some weird wrinkles in court employees that in some respects, they're sort of county employees, but in other respects, they're not. And so that's why then we have, we are required to have a separate uh, personnel policy. And so our folks, if they have employment issues, don't go through HR, they go through the court process. With their benefits issues, they go through HR, uh, but so that there's a, there's a very strange sort of dance that happens. And uh, this county's been great about that and Jeff's been great about working with those issues, as has Ms. Reilly. But the state tells us that to the greatest extent that we can, our personnel policies should match those of our funding units. To minimize, you know, areas where there's uh, differences among the employees. So your HR director proposed some changes to your personnel policies and I'm told that this board approved those changes. So as the judges and court administrators, we met and proposed to make changes to our policies that would simply mirror those. So that's on your agenda today in the business as well. Uh, any questions about the reporters and proposals?
That was very, very good report, Aaron, and I appreciate it. It's very elegant. Fifty-third Circuit Court. Those women who sound drunk on the bench, listening to her terms. In fact, it's probably a strong part of your job, according to what this report says.
Yeah, what you see happening in the courtroom is probably only about thirty percent of the people.
Sure. Yep.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you. Down to item sixty, straight regional riding and report. Oh, it's taken now and cheese now.
Good morning, Rebecca Sharpman, on the Director's Street, we're in the morning. My annual report. We have sixteen employees, five full-time, two full-time passengers, myself, seven part-time drivers, and one part-time bus company. We have fifteen revenue service vehicles. Fourteen of the vehicles are wheelchair accessible. The van is not. We have three twenty-eighteen, four five fifty medium duty diesel buses, two twenty-nineteen four, four fifty light duty buses. Uh, yeah, uh, twenty-nineteen minivan, a twenty-nineteen ten-passenger van, and eight twenty-twenty four, four fifty light duty gas buses. We have a twenty-nineteen pile truck for someone who will. All of our twenty-eighteen buses, twenty-nineteen buses, and the twenty-nineteen minivan. For total six vehicles are eligible for replacement and being requested for replacement. The upcoming fiscal year of twenty-seven. In our annual application, our entire fleet of fifteen vehicles will be eligible and I'll be requesting all the twenty-twenty's for replacement. This is a man of our service area that we. Do service different days, times, but we pretty much have five trucks consistent going out at any. Busy time of the day and busiest times of the year, we can have twelve buses operating. So this is our passengers count. Every day the bus drivers record information. And then that is internally recorded to the um, dot. We keep track of Chaboyia County riders, bestial, MS, Seagull. We keep track of. The type of rider, the student, pole, half-fair, senior, disabled, elderly, elderly disabled. We keep track of bikes. We keep track of vehicle hours, fuel miles. Our passenger count, on linked one-way trips, we're for fiscal year twenty-four, reconcile this. Thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine one-way trips recorded. All this information gets reported quarterly. And then we come up with the performance indicator report. So I picked some different counties, similar to ours, that we can compare. And for father, I throw um, Beta in for um, Traverse City because. It was huge. Now they're a small urgent urban. But as you can see, our, with all this information that we, we submit. Um, with our total eligible expenses, twenty-two miles, it tallies it. So we can get the cost per passenger and the cost per mile and the cost per hour to operate our buses. And straight regional ride, our cost per hour is about seventy dollars. And um, we're right in the ballpark. At Seago is seventy dollars, thirty-four cents. Um. And Antrim, Antrim County is eighty-two dollars. So that's what it costs per hour to operate a bus. It helps us. Kind of know where we're at with other agencies. Our mileage, our, our bus, our twenty-eighteens are pushing a hundred and fifty thousand miles, and twenty-nineteens are gonna be ten thousand monthly. Our twenty-twenty's are pushing a hundred thousand miles. My pile truck's got eleven thousand miles in it. So. We're starting to see. Mucklers go, course brace and tires. We're starting to see a little bit more maintenance with our fleet. For the near future, uh, we've got two buses, vehicles that have been approved for replacement. We haven't gotten them on yet. It's just to get it to fall of twenty-five. Our um, one of our diesel buses is gonna be replaced with a uh, with real transit money. Or a ten-passenger high-profil transit van, which has one wheelchair position. And uh, currently, it's a hundred and three thousand dollars and it's valuable. Our minivan is gonna be replaced with a four-five-fifty diesel medium duty bus. Which would be a twenty-six passenger and we use that quite a bit for a compass route in uh, Mecklenburg City roads. And that authorization currently is turning nineteen thousand dollars for that bus. Fiscal year twenty-six, we're looking at getting a twelve thousand dollar grant for real transit buses. We just don't receive the, we're gonna approve for it. And we're gonna replace our buses with a cellular two-ray radios. To reduce the cost. It offers better transmission and GPS coverage and maybe set us up for some of like Chinese um. Just aging software and anything we like. We're starting to investigate that. So. That's about all I have.
Questions?
Can you share them? Just a comment, just turning up. And again, a job. She does a great job. Well, and I think, and I think we can, you know, look at how many of the costs there. That's because that's a new, they're, all their equipment's new. And I guess where I'm going, why I bring that up is, is because I think is we're gonna start seeing that the importance of having aging equipment. You're gonna start seeing the cost per mile go up. I guess in that, that I would, I would show that, you know, because it was only sixty-one dollars in Alpina, but that's all brand new stuff. That's.
And they have a lot of transit vans.
Right.
And actually they have a lot of vehicles that are sitting in their garage.
Well, that's, they're abundant. So they're recycling through and they don't, they don't get used like ours. I guess they're sold out with that dumb reason. But each does a good job of handling per miles, because I manage a lot of fees myself.
Anything else for Rebecca? Thank you, Rebecca. Good report. Down to the administrator reporting, crying seven. That's twenty-nine on your act and board. Or twenty-eight, not twenty-nine?
We're going to Valerius Institute, you know? In my words. The Dog Park Project, I also need the defense portion of it, uh, working with the, the Dog Park members to, you know, purpose and. Uh, save furniture, put up the waste through sector goals. Uh, they're also looking at costing, putting some type of shade pavilions and so, uh, so we can get our. Numbers in on final grant lots of these components that they see that's left over. Uh, to see if we can build, shape pavilions at the, the site. Um, we'll have soft opening here over the next few weeks, just after the fair. And then um, plan on a dedication of the site, uh, probably after Labor Day sometime in September, uh, or early, you know, early October. The USDA Emergency Watershed Protection Program grants, uh, we're working with USDA staff. Uh, sites have been identified. At this point, the information can be provided USDA. Uh, we have, we'll look at the sites and help come up with estimates. Uh, we also have local contractor, uh, that's willing to go look at the sites to give some preliminary numbers, so the two. Uh, numbers can be compared. Uh, that would be sent in to USDA for, for final review. Uh, at this point, we'll also start um, contacting property owners, uh, to see, uh, if they provide basically. Uh, easement access only during the project to either watershed or um, the riverfront area. A lot of the sturgeon, the sturgeon rivers primarily understate ownership, but you have to enter a credit property to get to those. It's around public property access. And then in the little black watershed, uh, those areas are uh, primarily owned by private property owners. Hide back to easements that go back to the projects in the uh, late thirties, early sixties here. Uh, so we'll continue on that, um, providing information to USDA, giving them appropriate, you know, somewhere you able to see if, if we qualify to stand, pushing forward on that. Uh, phase one, uh, one window or door replacement project, the engineer is in the process, um. And the ability here, we put together the, the base specs for the project, you know, we're gonna replace all the. The many windows inside the portion area here and the uh, the door here in the seventy-nine section. And um. And we'll see on timing whether that happens this fall or early winter. Of course, we learn to weather, we will schedule out into the spring. Uh, continue that project. So, you have any questions?
Jeff, are we gonna include the uh, east side of the door?
No, not on this phase. No, we, and east side happens and it affects the whole curtain wall, right to the mock door. Yeah, right. And then, uh, there'll be four windows replaced on the east side that are not part of the curtain wall. So portion of one, but not, not the whole.
Thank you. Any questions for the? Okay, moving on, old business. There's no old business. We're on to new business.
Reports?
I'm sorry?
Major reports.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
Okay, we're down to new business. Twenty-twenty for audit approval. That's thirty on my pad.
Um, I was once presented by Doug Eater, um, since his second year that Raymond has done the audit for the county. Um, the audit was a clean and qualified for him. Um, the county's been interested in some creative material budget violations and that was upon balances. There were no material witnesses or significant invasions identified in the audit. Um, the audit also contains additional information ordered to comply with the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Um, this certificate recognizes individual governments that go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. Prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the sphere of transparency and full disclosure. The goal, the goal of the program is not to assess the financial health of the existing governments, but rather to ensure that you, these. Other financial statements have the information they need to do so themselves. We've won the award two years and we're hoping to get that for the third year on this one. Um, all of the reports have been submitted. Um, all of the reports have been submitted to the state of Michigan by August thirty of twenty twenty-four. And the recommendation is to accept that December thirty-one twenty twenty-four audited financial statements for Chavoyan County. And if anyone has any particular questions of the two hundred plus pages, feel free to reach out to me. Um, I am going to, I think at the next one, pull out some things that's very, very informative. They're not really, they're part of that GFOA certificate of achievement that I think. Are interesting. They have a lot of stats with regard to the coming. Um, that aren't audited, they're just included in the audit, um, I think. Are helpful to look at.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure, board.
Well, I just got a question that goes back. It's a long years, but um. What was the average county's funding intention? He said we were sixty-some percent, I mean.
Uh, sixty-six.
Sixty-six percent. Yeah, but what is, are that, what is the average? You know?
It apparently between sixty-six and seventy-two.
Cause that's just where everybody has to be, right?
Uh, well, the lowest portion of it is sixty-two percent. If you go below sixty-two percent, then you have to file a report with the state.
I was just glad to see we went up a couple of percent.
Yeah, a lot much.
Yeah.
Funds were below and then a few years ago, then see kind of nailed out.
Right.
Some of them, so I think it's the average is kind of going up.
That's what pumps me out. Can you work so hard like that when they come up?
We just got the low.
Yeah. So that's why we pulled that line pretty well on all that.
Right.
What about the both?
Were the uh? You might have a better. That's doesn't show up in our percentages, but uh.
Always part of their funding?
Yes, I know that there were.
They were under funded.
Trouble for a while.
They didn't get some of that funding?
I know they've been trying to work on it.
I can send that to you guys in the.
I just wanted to comment.
Okay.
On page two seventy-one and two seventy-two, there was audit report, um, there's a recommendation to the reigning group. The, their findings that are. Very minor. I just want to say that. It's evidence that what Sue and Jeff do, like officials. Um, you for this family. Cause this is a very complex accounting system to manage. We have a. Excellent staff that can. Perform this and. And having a over a two-hundred-and-eighty-page audit is evidence of how much work goes into managing this town. Just want to thank Jeff and the. Like officials and staff. Manages, managers of this county very well.
Send the comments, good comment. How about motions to receive, accept and file?
Sure, Rob. While the information is light.
Court, I'll support. Thank you, Jeff. Adam Ward.
Mr. Stanser?
Yes.
Mr. Eustace?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yeah.
Mr. Osmann?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Thank you, board. The file, file, oh, and two action. That's acceptable. Courts Personal Policies Procedures Manual. That's two eighty-three on your iPad. Two, my personal grade. Yes, so the law. Law. I am.
Captain, we have revisions to the court policies.
Thank you, man.
As Jeff calls for review for longevity. Uh, we had a line of twenty-five-plus years with proceeding five hundred dollars. The application on page. Twenty-five plus. Received twenty-five days per pound of the year, up to twenty-three days to match general policy and asking contract. Here we um. That was already amended to add decent F, revenues and domestic partner. And on the working holidays, uh, visits adjusted based on what actually happens. We don't. Fortunately, a lot of employees that have to work on holidays should work. Uh, but when you do, you may see uh, holiday trade plus um, uh, always work. There's any recommendations. This jury is an order, this is our selection election, these are government, this is our policies and procedure.
Thank you, great support. I'll support. Um, right.
Mr. Osmann?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Eustace?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Stanser?
Yes.
That motion is carried by. Oh, and two. We're down to nine C, the twenty-twenty-six budget process time, quite familiar. That's three twenty-nine on your iPad.
Yes, it's just. Sorry, I can't record it again. So. Um, it's the same pretty much as we've done in the past. Just note, um, we're hoping to have a detailed budget, the long meeting we usually talk about budget, October twenty-eighth. It's uh, the tentative goal and final approval on this should align. Um, the recommendation is to approve the twenty-twenty-six budget process time.
What's your point, board? It's kind of similar to what we have known.
I like that.
Thank you, board.
I'll support.
Thank you, Jeff. Ben and Clark.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanser?
Yes.
Mr. Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Thank you, board. That's carried by the. Child care fiscal year twenty-six grant app. That's three thirty-one on your iPad.
Every year we need to present a budget application to um, the state for childcare. Um, it used to be fifty percent state, fifty percent. County, then the state added the seventeen, the eighteen year old, raised the age for three years. We got a hundred percent of them. Last year they changed it and did like a modified fifty percent state, fifty percent county if it's out of. Home placement and seventy-five percent state, twenty-five percent county or in-home type of services, which I guess they believe made up for that mandate of a hundred percent. So. I don't think it matters whether it works or not. Um, so I think this is the second year. Last year we bumped up the anticipated expenditures as I talked about before. We. Kind of overinflate this with the state because we don't know what kind of institutional need we might have with. Placements with kids and so it's easier to adjust our budget than to adjust the state's budget. So. This year we have a fiscal twenty-six anticipated expenditure of a little over five million. As compared to four point nine million and twenty-five, which is only a sixty-six thousand proposed increase or one point three four percent. Um, that compares to um, in twenty-four, our actual budget was one point nine million on the county's level and we actually spent one point two nine. So you can see that we do overinflate quite a bit, but since we are obligated with the state, we do um. Apply terms for a lot more and it's mainly the institutional care that's, that's bigger. Um, we keep the, the main part of the program with the compass and um. And the um, juvenile services in there. We keep that more, the more realistic, but it's a smaller portion of that budget. So. Um, the recommendation is to submit the fiscal year twenty-six county childcare budget as presented. Furthermore, authorize. The chairperson of the county board, sub commissioners or the county administrator or finance director to sign any forthcoming agreements. Or required documentations upon review and approval of the finance director and we go across.
Did I read that right? That's the total. One of five million childcare.
Like I said, we budgeted one point nine million.
Imagine if we had a lot of students.
Yes, we hope we never hit that.
We're still responsible for two twenty-one.
Yeah. Thank God for Fenlands.
Mr. Joe, I'd like to acknowledge.
Thank the rich support.
I'll support.
Thank you, Tom. Ben and Clark.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanser?
Yes.
Thank you, board. We're down to fairground event agreement. So it's kind of routine as the, as the fair move along.
Yeah, if the board likes it, you have all the one motion, you have filled out a grant agreements, uh, and the laser straight rates. All cars, uh. Michigan Board of Commerce Association. Uh, yes, for approval of that to consider on uh, final staff review.
Could you do all three and one?
Mr. Rob, he's a motioner.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll support.
Thank you. Ben and Clark.
Commissioner Stanser?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yeah.
Thank you, board. That's carried by all and do that. We're down to nine. That's vehicle purchases, construction code and county fleet. It's three forty-two on your iPad.
See, I placed bids for replacement of one fleet vehicle. Uh, that was a bad sign earlier this, this year. And uh, one construction pool vehicle. Received ports back in the United States orders. Uh, for equal odds, three, six, nine, forty, a clear laser, twenty-five thousand, two ninety-nine, eighty, that's a ten, ten, six. Um, and compared against uh, ownership lays, uh, equal odds for twenty-twenty-five state pay. Twenty thousand nine eighty-four. So the recommendation is to, you know, in with new owners and then ten twenty-six, should equal odds and then should be trail blazing. To authorize any of this or any other investment.
I have built most of this on there. I'm still applying.
Who gets what in this case?
Equal odds, a little V, construction. Trail waiting going in, going for, and we. We post all the wires and. Yeah, yeah.
Be some sure, sure.
Actually.
Still be in a warning.
Yeah, that's true. Where it is and point of.
Court, that. Tom's court. Ben and Clark.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Osmann?
Yes.
Mr. Eustace?
Yes.
Mr. Stanser?
Yes.
Thank you, board. We're down to nine. Gee, the Straits Regional Ride and COESD twenty-five, twenty-sixth full year agreement.
Um, this is an agreement that we've had for several years. Um, the name is still that the three person. Um, so it's going up to seventy-nine thousand five hundred sixty dollars, filled in four quarters. Um, the recommendation is to CLTSD Honaway and Roger City School Contract Authorizing the Chairperson or Administrator to sign on the city. Trustee sixty.
Mr. I'll make the motion to be approved.
Thank you, my God. I'll support. Thank you, Jeff. Ben and Clark.
Mr. Osmann?
Yes.
Mr. Stanser?
Yes.
Mr. Eustace?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yeah.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Thank you. That's carried by the all and a little operating money for next year. Board banners for discussion. During none? Citizens comments?
I do, can I actually have a sit one?
Okay.
Conversation and Jeff Langton, I apologize because I don't know. The act, it just mean, uh, and I see you're telling me not that so. Do I under, do you know anything about that?
Not specifically.
Well, they just, well, and now when it moved and it goes back to the counties. Then or that public act that says the state has the names. He's actually in the choice. I don't know this act. I just sort of caught it clicking. It's more than a shady and I. It don't do nothing, but I thought it was like a public memorial. This happened in court last Thursday.
That'll be another lengthy lawsuit.
Yeah. But it was interesting because it's he stayed, he did all the public act two fifty-eight, I think, and whatever has a due related to that.
Yeah.
Does not excuse.
State's in charge of something, they said.
Well, but the judge in my sequel colony said no.
I know.
So that that means that the county does have a say. Actually, man, will be. Interesting.
Certainly try.
How many more? Same area, children, ever, similar health, or what or not. I mean, hey, and.
Hey, good, good point. Thank you, Eric. Citizen comment. You ready, please?
Hi, I'm Yvette Kudak with Chelsea's Closet. I was in a couple of weeks ago and gave a small presentation and a thank you for the ten thousand dollar grant that was awarded to Chelsea's Closet in August of twenty twenty-three. Um, I'm just doing some follow-up today. I would like to have some information on the proper way to go about um. The reimbursement for. The um, I said. Submitted my proposal. It was worth the ten thousand dollars that was awarded. Uh, Chelsea's Closet was advanced six thousand nine hundred thirty dollars in spending expense in September of twenty-three. Uh, in May of this year, I submitted my receipts for ten thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars. And there's an outstanding. Balance of the grant allocated for Chelsea's Closet of three thousand sixteen nine dollars in spending expense. I've submitted um. Some emails that have not been answered. And um, I just would like to know what are my next steps on how I move forward with that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide the answer uh, by tomorrow. We continue our communication there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else that I can talk to? Can I check?
I'm good.
Care of that means?
I'm good. Louis was writing this and never move by. I was gonna say, I was. Yeah, I'm good.
It's like sugar, huh? Nice, very good commentary. I put a motion to adjourn the call to care.
So movements.
Court, I'll support. All the business guy?